That the others will join us at some point. Open forum, does anybody have anything? I don't think we have one. Were there any questions or anything in open forum online, Joanne?
No.
Okay. Then we'll go to the consent agenda. Will someone make a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is four of us enough?
Yes.
Okay.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
I need a second.
Second.
I had a seconds. Are there any questions about anything that was in our, in the minutes?
Well, wait a minute, can I second because I wasn't there?
Yeah, you can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, somebody will come in. Then we'll go to the director's report. You want to add anything to the director's report, Jamia?
Um, maybe this would be a good place for me to talk about our call the other day. So we, as I said in the email that I sent out, as I was talking with HUD about the chiller at Carlson Plaza, which by the way is holding its own for now. The subject of RAD came up again. And once again, RAD stands for Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. And there are several different models under RAD. Where you, basically they, they public housing, they're not public housing anymore, but they still receive some form of assistance. Generally, some type of a Section 8 assistance. One of the things that we had talked about was a, what's called a voluntary conversion. So what would happen under a voluntary conversion is that each unit would receive a project-based voucher, which means that it's just like our voucher program, except that the voucher would stay with the unit instead of the tenant. Now, the caveat to that program I learned is if you, if you're going to do a project-based voucher conversion, voluntary conversion, it has to be your entire portfolio, not just one building here and one building there. So we kind of went, oh, I don't know about all of that right now. So, um, we, um, like, they kind of put the brakes on that for a little bit. And then we talked about, um, we had our, we talked about that on our call. And then we also talked about how like any kind of a conversion or RAD conversion would affect our debt service to the city and our energy performance contract. So those are a couple of areas where it might get a little bit sticky. Now, if we just did some form of RAD or disposition with Carlson Plaza only, our debt to the city would not be affected because that is tied to this building, the Apartment Towers building, not Carlson Plaza building. But if we decide to do something with the entire portfolio, then that's something we need to consider.
You move.
I'm sorry? Oh, um, so, um, two other options we talked about were demolition and disposition. Disposition being where you would just walk away from the property, sell the property at fair market value and walk away from it. And we said, well, you know, if we did that, of course, we'd have to run a whole lot of numbers to see how that would affect us. But what do we do with that money? Are we able to pay debt service with it? Would we be able to pay down the city debt or the EPC debt? Or can we even do that since we have an EPC that involves Carlson Plaza? And so that's something we need to get with Johnson Controls about. And HUD was, HUD didn't really have any firm answers to that either. But they were going to kind of look into it a little further for us. The other option would be to do a demolition and build replacement housing, which would involve, we'd have to get financing for that, of course. We demolish the property. And in order to do that under a RAD model, the repairs would have to be at least 62.5% of total development cost. Total development cost is determined by a number that HUD publishes. There's not been a number published for Manhattan. There, there is one for Topeka. And in 2019, the total development cost per unit was $170,000 per unit.
Per unit?
Per unit. So if you would take the $170,000 times 47 units and the total repair cost for Carlson Plaza would have to be 62.5% of that. I'm not, none of us are real confident that we would get to that number. That's a lot of money per unit. So, but we, we all agreed that before we can really know what is the best thing to do, if anything, other than fix the, the chiller right now, or replace the chiller right now, is to get the, the capital needs assessment done, which we've talked about. We have that, we have funds for that in our capital fund program budget. We had planned on doing one only for Carlson Plaza when we developed that budget, but they suggested that we go ahead and do it for our whole portfolio, just because we don't know how things are going to evolve. So undoubtedly, it'll be more than the 15,000 that we had budgeted for Carlson Plaza. And we'll have to revise our capital fund budget to accomplish that. Gregory Burns in the headquarters office did send me probably at least the, the name of at least 25 firms that are certified with HUD to do these capital needs assessments that we could send an RFP to. And I, I'm almost done with the RFP. And he only sent me the names. He didn't send me the addresses and all that stuff. So I've been Googling all these businesses to get their addresses and what have you. So I expect probably by the end of next week, we should be ready to go out for an RFP to get the needs assessment done. And I think after our conversation, that that will be key to helping us know what our best option is. Head, or the field office is also going to request for us from headquarters some technical assistance. It's something that has to be requested and it's given to us kind of in the form of a grant. But we get, oh, I, I don't know how many hours, but you get so many hours of technical assistance. And they'll help kind of walk you through each model and show you how this would affect the agency, how this one would affect the agency, how this one would. Mandy's working now on getting some numbers together as far as each individual development, what they come and the expenses are as best she can. We don't separate out all of the expenses for each development. Utilities are all separated out because we have to. But so we'll have to just kind of do pro rata on some of those, those costs. So we're working on that right now. So, you know, it's not going to be an overnight thing. But I, I, I suspect we're going to have a lot more long discussions in this regard.
I think especially since three people aren't here, it would be good if you could give us a written summary of what you just told us. I know Mandy's taking notes like crazy. But, um, to make sure that everybody understands all of those different things and which ones you're doing what toward. So we can see what you're working on in regards to the different options. Cause it sounds like you're looking at different things for different things.
We're looking at every option, basically from walking away from the development to totally rehabbing it or knocking it down and building something new. And I think we need to consider all of those options. But in light of our, our current financial situation and our current ask score, we're a little bit limited with some of those options. So not every option may even be viable for us. But we're going to explore as much as we can. And I think it'll be helpful to get that technical assistance. So we'll wait to hear from them.
Okay.
I had thought that the full board was going to be on board for these discussions instead of just two people. Like you set up two people to sit in on that phone call.
And I wasn't there.
But I think it needs to be, I mean, we have to thoroughly understand this. This is a big undertaking. It's not, um, anyway.
We can do that, Linda, at a later date. This wasn't a, um, this was like a half hour phone call. And it was, um, the options, like the, the details of each option were not necessarily discussed. It was kind of explaining to the, the gurus in Washington, you know, what our situation was and kind of getting their advice as to what they thought the best options might be. And kind of looking at other angles of, of the voluntary conversion.
What, what is our situation that you described to them?
Our situation is, is that we have a 47-unit building whose chiller is failing and needs to be replaced.
Yep.
We're in a financial travel status. Where
So the chiller would trip us across into all of these radical changes?
I'm sorry?
So financing a chiller would throw us into these dramatic financial issues?
Well, depending on what option we choose. I mean, if we would choose to walk away from it, we don't want to sink a bunch of money into a new chiller. And honestly, there's varying opinions at different levels of HUD, you know? One engineer will say, you, you guys need to just get it replaced and do it now. And another one will say, well, let's limp it along a little ways and wait until we see what we're going to do. So I'm, I'm personally not in favor of limping it along because we've been limping it along. It needs to be replaced. But I also understand that we don't want to replace it and then say, well, we're just going to demolish the building and there we're at, a couple hundred thousand dollars down the tube.
No kidding? Anyway, I'm sure
Well, I think what has to happen is we have, we have to have a written explanation of everything that Jamie and Joanne listen to. And I think there are some of those things that we can just say, no, we're not going to do that. We're probably not going to do that. Probably not going to do that.
I think there's some, I think there's some of those things that we won't be ready to do just because of our
And then the things that are possible, possibilities, then Joanne can say, I have to, before we can think about this, I have to do these three things. And she can do that for the ones that seem potentially possible. And then we start whittling down once we get all this other information that we need before we can make any of these decisions. This is not going to happen in two months or five months or six months. This is going to take a long time. And the question is, you know, what happens when the chiller just quits? And we're still in the middle of trying to decide what's the best thing to do.
Exactly.
You know, the idea of demolishing that building makes me a little sad. I would, I, I would think that would not be something that we want to do. If maybe selling that building might be something we want to do, in which case we'd have to sell it as is. You know, like, like a used car. And, and somebody might be able to do something really cool with that building. I mean, it's a neat building, I mean, with whatever problems it may have. So I, I just, I, I think we are a lot of steps away from having to understand all the details until Joanne and, and Mandy start taking some steps to get information that they need and so forth. But if you would give us a summary in this week's minutes so that we can kind of look through it and get an idea of what you're mulling over and what you're doing, that'd be a good first step.
Yeah, I think I will, um, maybe send out a summary separately.
Okay.
That just talks about just that phone call.
Okay.
I think that would make more sense.
Okay.
But you're right, there's a lot of steps. There's nothing that's going to happen right away. In any event, you know, if we have to empty out the building to do whatever we decide to do with it, there are tenant protection vouchers available from HUD. So the, the tenants that are there would not just be thrown out on the streets with nowhere to go or relocated into other public housing units unless they wanted to be. There, there are tenant protection vouchers for those tenants. So that was one of my main concerns.
Okay. Jamie, we've just been going over your conversation on the phone on Monday.
Jamie wasn't on the call.
Oh, Jamie wasn't there either?
No.
Okay. Jamie, are you in your car? Okay. Um, all right. Does anybody have any other questions about anything else in the director's report or the minutes or Mandy's report?
Linda, if, if there are future calls and you would like to be a part of those, I will be glad to include you.
Well, if I can, I want to be. I want to understand this so I can support it.
Okay.
Amy's having, Jamie's having technical problems.
She's brave.
Okay. Well, if there are no other questions about the
So this is the only opportunity for Joanne to talk about when she's going to reopen, other than what's in the director's reports. Have any, has anything changed? Are you still, July 1st is on a Wednesday. Is that when you're going to open?
Well, I do have a COVID update on the agenda, but I could talk about it now.
Okay, on the agenda. I'll wait, that's fine. I just was looking at the report and reacting to it, okay. And the Hudson Circle drainage, you said that you think it's going to be done by the end of the month?
That is what the city is telling me.
Okay.
Of course, assuming there's no bad weather.
Yeah.
They may have to wait until fall to reseep. But I mean, it's looking pretty good back there.
Okay, good. Perfect. I know the gas ones will be pleased.
Yes. Yeah. And I might also mention that I had an email from the fire department the other day. And they kind of beat me to the draw because it's been kind of in the back of my mind since we've reopened. But, um, they were offering to provide some fire safety training to the residents here at the Apartment Towers. Because they, they get several calls for people who are, have unattended cooking issues and set off the fire alarms, especially after hours when nobody's here to tell them, never mind, it's not a fire. So I responded and said that we would be thrilled to have that happen. And I will suggest we could do the same at Carlson. We don't have as many fire calls over there, but it still would be nice to give that training.
Good.
That's a good move, okay.
It's a good thing. And we're, we're going along with whatever the city's doing or not doing in terms of reopening?
We're, we're watching what the city's doing. We're not, um, you know, our goal is July 1st. We're kind of watching those numbers as they're lining upward again. Scares me just a little bit. But, you know, we've gotten almost all of our equipment and, and sanitizers and what have you that we ordered. We still have a couple of hand sanitizing stations that haven't come in yet, but we could use bottles of hand sanitizer strategically placed. We did get the ones to mount out by the elevators in the high rises. But we have almost all of our equipment in. And, you know, Mandy and I were talking today and I said, you know, it, it could be as safe on July 1st as it is on November 1st. It's just something that we just don't know. So, yeah, we're, we're kind of watching what the city says. And we were almost prepared to do it. And we hadn't gotten all of our, our PPE, the numbers were going up. And then Mandy had talked with Kathy Loush over at the city, who had mentioned the software program that the insurance company was developing. Well, we learned later that that's kind of separate from the insurance. So that's not so much of a concern anymore. But that's our goal. I'm not going to say, sit here and say absolutely positively, we are going to open on July 1 because I don't know what July 1 is going to bring. But I'm hoping that we can.
Okay.
None of your residents, and none of them have had the coronavirus?
No, we've had
Isn't that wonderful? Good.
Yeah, that I know of, we had one that had to quarantine. Well, we had two that were supposed to quarantine. I think one had just been exposed and had to quarantine. And one actually got tested and had some symptoms, but her test came back negative. So she had something else. So thank goodness.
Very good, okay.
So we're very pleased about that. We are still leaving the Apartment Towers and Carlson Plaza buildings locked 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We haven't heard too much crumbling about it. I, I think it's something we may want to consider doing. It seems to have helped slow down some of the traffic that doesn't necessarily need to be in and out of here without a key. And we have in the capital fund budget to convert those locks to a key card system. And that may be something we do until we get that, that system in place. I had asked Patrick to send out a survey and see how the tenants felt about it, aside from the coronavirus, just how they felt about the security of leaving the doors locked and having to have a key to gain access.
I would think the residents would feel safer with that system.
Yeah, I think most of them will be in favor of it. There's a few who like to have late night visitors. I think that may not be so much in favor, but we'll see.
Well, they can always go down and let them in.
That's right. That's what they're supposed to do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But back to the Corona deal. I don't think you guys need to be opening up too soon. We need to be very careful about that.
Yeah. I agree. We need to be very careful and keep monitoring things. It just, it, it does make me nervous that those numbers are still going up and it's community spread. And, um, it, it just makes me a little bit nervous.
Yeah.
Especially
Well, the more people get out, the more exposure there's going to be.
And I think that's what's happening now. And, you know, we're a small enough staff that if one or two of us goes down, that's going to be chaos in this office. So I don't want chaos in the office, but more than that, I don't want to see my staff get sick or definitely sick.
Yeah.
Because we opened too soon.
I, I think as long as you're functioning and you're serving the tenants and you're doing all the things that you need to do, there isn't any reason to rush to be back in the office.
Yeah. I, I agree.
What percentage of the tenants typically in the high rise are senior citizens or over 60? They seem to be the most vulnerable population. Would you say that's half or a quarter or what? Just, just rough, nothing, don't count anything.
I would say probably around disabled or elderly, I would say 65 to 75% of them, probably close to 75%.
It's good to be cau- so cautious then. And they should, they should appreciate it and feel safer with those measures. I noticed in the financial report that the security costs for the month were really up. Is that the cameras? What is that? That, are you paying for a security guard or what?
No, I believe that is probably repairs to the fire alarm system. Is that correct, Mandy? Yeah.
Okay, Mandy's shaking her head, yes, okay. Thanks, I just thought, thought of that as we went by, okay.
Okay. All right. I'm going to call a question on the consent agenda.
Jan?
Yes.
Linda?
Did you say Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
I say yes. Thank you.
Livy? Yes. Ava Jane?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes, I have sound now.
There you are.
It took a while, but I got there.
Okay, our first item of old business was COVID operation and operations. Have we covered everything, Joanne?
I think that we have. We are tracking, I will tell you this, we are tracking the number of hours that staff is working remotely. We're calling it pandemic leave. So when all of this kind of comes to a, a slowdown or, or we do open the offices up, I can be able to give you an accurate number of hours that staff works remotely and a number of hours that staff works remotely. I mean, a dollar figure.
I noticed that you've received $21,000 plus a bit for COVID or the cares or COVID. So I, but I couldn't find where you've spent any of it. So mostly you're just, you've received it, you've deposited it, and you really haven't used it yet. But then I saw in another place that you're going to get more money.
Well, the $21,000 was in the Section 8 program for administrative expenses. So we can only spend that on Section 8, like salaries and benefits, any overhead costs in Section 8. Then the $71,000 that we received was for the public housing program. We have spent some of those funds mostly on gloves and masks and hand sanitizers and disinfecting cleaners and that kind of thing. And we did get a ruling from HUD that we would be able to use that money also to assist in replacement of that chiller at Carlson Plaza. So the, the only thing that they tell us, well, not the only thing, but they stressed they stressed to us that we have to track that money, what we spend it on very carefully, because we can't just go out and decide to have a kick out of the lake and charge it to the COVID expenses.
But are you, are you tracking it separately? I can't find it in the financial report. If that's why I was asking.
Mandy, you have it shown, it's not showing in Mays.
No, it's showing on there. I don't have my board pack in front of me, but on the Section Eight Budget Progress Report, it should show down at the very bottom.
I found it on public housing, I think. Yeah.
It's showing on, and public housing has its own line item as well.
Yeah.
But on the Section Eight, it should be at the very bottom of the report. We're tracking it separately than just the regular financing as a part of it.
Have we seen a decrease in payments from tenants in regard to the coronavirus? Has anyone just point blank said they're not paying their rent, and how are we handling that?
There are a couple that have just point blank said, I'm not paying my rent. Not as many as I expected, actually, and I don't have that number right in front of me, but there's really nothing we can do until July twenty-four because of the HUD moratorium. It doesn't matter if they were affected by COVID or not affected by COVID. There, we can't give late notices, we can't charge late fees, and we can't evict until July twenty-four.
Can, can those funds be designated to cover any operating cost gaps that might cause as a result of that? Or is it not significant enough to really cause any operational cash flow issues?
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna be that significant. And honestly, that question's been asked, but it's, there's never been a real clear answer. They say, just use this extra money for your expenses. So I think they're saying, what they're trying to say is this extra money should cover the gap between the reduction in income and the expenses. But I, I do hope there are some extra funds available in the community. I, I think there's gonna be a lot of tenants, some within the housing authority, some outside of the housing authority, that are gonna need that assistance.
Yes.
That have, now, those who are within the housing authority and have experienced rent or job losses or loss of income, reduction of income, their rent has been adjusted accordingly. Except for the tax credit tenants out of Flint Hills Plaza.
To drink.
But the rest of them, their, their rents have been adjusted accordingly. So the tax credit, there are, I know, two tax credit tenants that were not affected by COVID that have not paid their rent. With, all the tenants who are delinquent in rent have received letters, not late notices, but letters just reminding them that they're still responsible for paying their rent during this time. And while there's a moratorium and, and we can't evict, it's in their best interest to keep their account current or contact us to set up some type of arrangement so that they didn't have a large balance and all of a sudden can't pay it. So we'll see how that goes. I, I hope that they're saving some back to take care of that come, come July twenty-four.
And have we resolved the the issues related to the two people that have appointments? Have meetings? What do we call those meetings?
Grievance hearings.
Yeah.
Uh, one of them I did communicate with just about fifteen minutes or so before five. And we're looking at the afternoon of the twenty-fifth or the twenty-sixth. And so I was gonna send an email out to the
Okay.
board members about that.
Did we get somebody else to help?
Yes, and Linda, I apologize. I know you had responded, and after you emailed me again, I thought, oh, she did respond. So yes, I have enough.
Okay.
Linda, I don't think you've ever sat in on a grievance hearing, have you? Or have you?
Me?
Yeah.
I have not with the housing authority. I have with other entities, so, but it's not
Well, I was gonna say I could get the other third person, and if you wanted to sit in just to kind of see the process. Or, you know, you can, you can sit on it.
I think my answer consistently is it depends on the day and time that you schedule it.
Yeah.
Whether I can do it, because this is elective when I, if I were to join with you. So anyway, so let me know when. And it, it will not be on Zoom, will it? It will be in person?
Well, that depends. I know Phil prefers in person. I asked the other person what they prefer and what they had capability of, and I would say that. I know Jan prefers Zoom or on the phone. So we'll see what the majority says.
Okay. No, I just
I do have some these shows that I can set in front of everybody in the big room.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
And we have masks, of course. And the other person is actually also under eviction for non-payment because it started before the, the moratorium was issued. And the courts are just finally reopening and getting around to hearing these cases. So if his, our case is upheld in court, the grievance hearing for the termination that was issued also will be moved. So I was kind of waiting to hear the results of the court hearing on the twenty-third.
What time is it?
Is the court
Time is the court hearing on the twenty-third?
It's either two or three. There's two scheduled back to back that day.
Okay. What about, there was another issue, oh, that you had evicted someone for continuing, continually allowing other people to in and out of the unit. Wasn't that a situation that, or is that one of the two you're talking about?
That might be one of the two we're talking about.
With this meeting being live, do we need to be cautious about some of these items in terms of acknowledgement and detail?
Yeah, we need to not identify anybody.
Um, just so y'all know, we lost Jan, so that means Livy becomes chair until Jan gets back.
She'll be back. Then she figures it out.
Paul, we're waiting for Jan. I'm, I'm in your parking lot because I couldn't get on, and I was at my office thinking it'd just be easy to jump on.
Thank you.
And so I'm in your parking lot right now because I was worried I wouldn't be able to get on at all, and I didn't know how many people we had.
Oh, my God. Oh, here we are.
When we're done, I'll come out and say hi.
My dog knocked me off for a while, but I'm back.
I don't know where I saw it. Oh, wow. Okay.
So it was in the grievances chart. It was termination for unauthorized person, and if there's a termination stand.
Okay, good. Thank you.
I have a random question that has always kind of been a curiosity for me. Oh, now I need to find where it was. There's a, there's a little, like thirteen dollar investment income every month. What is that?
That's our interest that we get off our bank account.
Do we have anything left? Okay, can we call it without Jan? Okay, let's call it. Unless anybody has anything.
You're the vice chair? Right? I think so. Okay.
All right. I'm done.
We have a plan. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Uh-huh. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.